Good evening, everyone. Township Edison Zoning Board of Adjustment Regular Meeting is now in session. Adequate notice of this meeting as required by the Open Public Meetings Act of 1975 has been provided by the annual notice published in the Home News Interview on December 28, 2019, and has been posted in the main lobby of an municipal complex on January 5, 2020. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
(Inaudible)
Thank you. Regarding to do the roll call, and then after that, I will ask everybody to please go on mute unless you are speaking. Jim, roll call, please.
Mr. Kamba?
Here.
Mr. Kamba?
Here.
Mr. Taglianetti?
Present.
Mr. Schmuel?
Here.
Mr. Mansouri? Mr. Mansouri?
He's trying to get on, I think. I think he's trying.
Mr. Sedada?
Present.
Mr. S- Present?
Yep.
Vice Chair Ski Bar?
Here.
Chairwoman Federick?
Here.
Mr. Shaw?
Present.
Mr. Bignell?
Here.
We have everyone.
Jim, this is Mr. Betty. I'm present as well.
No, it's Mr. Betty and Mr. Taglianetti.
I said Mr. Taglianetti.
Oh, you did. Oh, okay. How about Mr. Betty?
Mr. Beatty?
Present.
Okay.
Did you hear Mr. Patel?
Mr. Mansouri here.
Not yet. But Mr. Shaw just spoke with him. He said he was trying to get on. So, he's coming. He's coming. No, that's Mr. Patel is here. And Mr. Mansouri is still trying to get on.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Okay. So, we have two alternates.
Right. And I don't know where he is. He must be having trouble. Well, in the meantime, can you read the first case, please, Jim?
First case? Case number Z46 2015, Amendment to Resolution for an Extension of Time for T-Mobile, 225 Pearson Avenue, Edison, New Jersey, 08837. Extension of time requested for condition number four in the approved 2015 resolution that allows the temporary facility to remain for two years. The ZBA granted a two-year extension in 2018. The same two-year extension is being requested again today. T-Mobile has still not received clearance from PSENG to relocate back onto any of the new electric transmission towers, and thus additional time is requested.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mansouri now appeared. Good evening, Mr. Stamos.
Yes, good evening, everyone.
The virtual floor is yours.
Very good. Thank you. For the record, Dean Stamos of the law firm of Ferraro &amp; Stamos on behalf of the applicant T-Mobile Northeast LLC. Again, this relates to, we have a temporary site that was approved back in 2015. We had a subsequent extension of two years because we needed additional time to kind of get through the bureaucracy that is PSENG, and I do say that in a good way, but it's definitely a difficult procedural process. So, we're at the point now, well, again, this property is 225 Pearson Avenue. I have with me Mr. Tim Kronk, who is the planner, but he's also involved in the construction process and permitting process that we're going through with PSENG. And basically, it's, we have our permit to proceed. It's just we're kind of stuck. We need the outage schedule from PSENG that will allow us to complete our relocation and installation upon there, the PSENG tower. So, I do have Mr. Kronk here if anyone has any questions, but I think that, in essence, states it all, where we're at. We're ready to go. It's just a matter of being allowed to do the construction.
Okay. Thank you, Stamos. Does the board have any questions for Mr. Stamos or for Mr. Kronk?
Mr. Stamos, just a very general question. Are these new antennas designed for, are they for the next 5G?
Good que- Tim, do you want to?
I have to swear him in.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, let's swear him in.
Put your right hand. You solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, to help you God?
I do.
Okay. Let's go on.
This installation actually currently does not include a 5G upgrade. The process with PSENG is such a lengthy one that that was not even in the works when we submitted our original design to them and received approval to proceed with a lease on the facility. So, if at some point down the road, T-Mobile was going to add 5G to this location, it would have to be done as some type of subsequent modification and not as part of the install that we have a building permit for at this time.
Thank you.
Does the board have any other questions for Mr. Kronk or Mr. Stamos?
Rose, I have a question. Madam Chair. Can we assume that, I guess, this work will be done within the next two years?
Is that one for me?
Sure, yeah.
Yes, I certainly-
Whoever.
I certainly do believe two years is, you know, a very reasonable timeframe. It could be as, you know, quickly as six months. It just, we never know the timeframe for the PSENG outages. Actually, PSENG doesn't even control the outages. They have to go through a thing that's called National Grid Manager who allows outages. So, it's even above PSENG. It's a part of the BPU and a National Grid Management Plan.
Thank you.
Board have any other questions of Mr. Kronk or Mr. Stamos? Okay, Mr. Stamos, do you want to add anything?
No. Just, we appreciate the board's time and hearing us, and again, we're ready to go. It's just a matter of getting, being allowed for that outage and to put up the installation. So, we would ask that the board grant a request for the extension.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Stamos, having said that, I'll go to the board, please, for a motion. Oh, wait, I'm sorry. Wait a minute. Did I forget something? Oh, I'm sorry, the public. I forget the public's not here. Okay, I have to go to the public. Anyone within 200 feet of the property wanting to be heard? Anyone outside of 200 feet of the property wanting to be heard? That, I'll close the case, and now I'll go to the board, please. Thank you, Boofy.
Madam Chair, I'll make a, is Mr. Kamba?
Yep.
I will make a motion to approve the request. These, the site is currently existing, and it is not, is it the minimis request? And I'll make a motion to approve with the hope that they will not be back in another two years.
Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Who was that?
Taglianetti.
Tag, Mr. Taglianetti. Roll call, Jim. Remember, I'm last.
Mr. Kamba?
Yes, on the motion.
Mr. Taglianetti?
Yes, on the motion.
Mr. Schmuel?
Yes, on the motion.
Mr. Mansouri?
Yes, on the motion.
Mr. Sedada?
Yes, on the motion.
Vice Chair Ski Bar?
Yes, on the motion.
And last, Chairwoman Federick?
Yes, on the motion.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Stamos. Stay well, stay healthy. We see you in person.
That's right. You too. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to put you on mute a minute. Jim, may, can you read the second case, please?
Yes, I can. Case number Z04 2020, Prashant Patel, 870 New Dover Road, Edison, New Jersey, 08820. Section 37.63-1, number 7, 10, 13, and 16. All can use or devariances sought to construct a new single-family dwelling. Required rear yard setback is 33.24 feet, proposed is 25.92 feet. Required lot coverage is 20%, proposed is 24.4%. Maximum FAR permitted is 37%, proposed is 42%. Maximum impervious coverage permitted is 40%, proposed is 46.2%. Effective properties located in the RBB zone designated as block number 459, lot number 88, on the Edison Township tax map, all paperwork is in order.
Is the applicant, Mr. Patel, here? Or anyone here on his behalf?
This is Paul Fletcher. I am here. The applicant is with me in my office.
Okay, great.
I'm here to help present the case for Mr. Patel.
Okay, is he going to speak first? Because Ms. Shaw has to swear him in?
Okay, I'll give the phone to Mr. Patel.
Okay, great. Thank you. Hi, Mr. Patel, would you raise? Raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, to help you God?
Yep.
Please state your full name for the record.
Yep, Prashant Patel.
Thank you, Mr. Patel. Please tell the board what you want to do and why you want to do it.
Yeah, I have my parents, and my kid's now going big, so I have only three rooms, so I need two more extra rooms. That's why I'm not going to be getting a house planning, because I'm living 15 years over there.
Okay. Do you want to have anything else to say, or do you want Mr. Fletcher now to speak on your behalf?
Yeah, Mr. Fletcher.
Okay, fine. Thank you, Mr. Patel.
Madam Chair, can I just ask a question?
I'm sorry, who was that?
This is Ashwani. This is Mr. Betty.
Go ahead. Sure, go ahead.
Madam Chair, in the package that was sent out to us, I did not get any documents in regard to this case, but I do have a package in my bundle for a singular wireless application, which is not on the agenda. So, I'm at a little bit of a loss to understand what it is that, I mean, we didn't get anything in regard to this.
Well, first of all- Mr. Beatty?
Ms. Shaw, I want to talk to you.
Yes.
Yes. Just so you know, that was the singular one is T-Mobile.
Okay.
You have that tabled and such. That's T-Mobile. That was the first one we just addressed.
Yep, okay.
Mr. Patel's application, we were given the packet previously.
Okay, so this is from previous. Okay, all right.
It's from the bundle from the million. Yes, okay?
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Fletcher, where are you?
Yes, I'm here.
Ms. Shaw will swear you in, please.
So, raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, to help you God?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Please state your full name for the record.
Yes, Paul J. Fletcher.
Okay, Mr. Fletcher, even though you've been here many times, you know the agenda, can you give us some of your qualifications, please?
Certainly. I'm a licensed professional engineer, professional planner in the state of New Jersey. I'm the principal of Fletcher Engineering. I've testified as a planner and engineer in front of the Edison Planning and Zoning Board, as well as boards in Woodbridge, Biscataway, Rawway, Perth Amboy, and numerous other townships and municipalities. My credentials are current and have not changed since the last time I've testified in front of the Edison Board.
Okay, thank you. We'll accept your qualifications. As I said to Mr. Stamos, the virtual floor is yours.
Thank you. The subject property, commonly known as 870 New Dover Road. It's in the RBB zone. It is an 11,076 square foot property, has an existing single-family dwelling. It is a conforming lot. It's 100 feet wide, 111 feet deep. The applicant proposes to demolish the existing dwelling and construct a new single-family home. As he mentioned, and I would reiterate, he and his family have lived here for 15 years. They're established in this neighborhood. They now have their parents living with them, and their children are getting larger. They have outgrown the home, but they don't want to relocate. The children are in school. They have friends. They're established in the neighborhood. They're good neighbors, and that's the reason they want to build this house at this location, rather than go to a bigger lot that wouldn't require several variances. The variances that are being requested are rear yard setback required in the RBB zone is 30% lot depth, so that equates to 33.24 feet. There's a small section of the building that encroaches into the setback. It's about 12 feet wide. It comes to a distance of 25.92 feet, so that's the first variance. Maximum lot coverage by building, where 20% is allowed in the RBB zone, and proposed is 24.4%. Maximum lot coverage, all impervious, 40% requested is 46.2%. Lastly, maximum FAR ratio allowed in the RBB zone is 0.37. We're requesting a variance for 0.43. I believe the bulk variances are not excessive. They're about, I would say, 10%, just a little over 10% of what's allowed. And the FAR ratio, although it's a use variance, as I've stated, in this particular case, this is a particularly well-suited site for this family, and we would request that the board grant the variances that are being requested so that they can construct a new home and remain in this neighborhood of Edison Township.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Fletcher. Does the board have any questions for Mr. Fletcher or the applicant?
Mr. Ski Bar, do you have a question? So, the, just to conclude, the existing home was completely demolished?
That is correct.
Okay. So, is there any reason why they can't conform more to the FAR? Is there some extraneous space that we might be able to, you know, at least get this in with a little bit more reasonable area of the township's FAR?
If you, if I could just consult with the client for a second?
Sure.
Sure, go ahead, Mr. Fletcher.
I've broached the subject with the applicant. He's very reticent to change the house. It's been designed to meet his needs, and he's waited 15 years for this opportunity. He would respectfully request that, that just be allowed. I would point out, if this was the RB zone, he wouldn't be seeking a variance for the FAR coverage. He would be allowed 44%. He's at 43.
Does the board have any other questions for the applicant or Mr. Fletcher?
Mr. Fletcher. Madam Chair, is Mr. Kamba?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Kamba.
Looking at the architectural drawings, Mr. Fletcher, it says on the back, raised patio optional. Are you going ahead with the raised patio, or?
Yes, we have it shown and included on our site plan.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board for Mr. Fletcher or the applicant?
Madam Chair, with the, with the bulk variances, the positive and negative criteria argument coming to, I guess, consideration here?
If I may, the applicant is seeking the approval for the bulk variances on the basis of a C2 criteria, where the benefits outweigh the detriments. In this case, he's taking an older, for him, functionally obsolete building, replacing it with a, an aesthetically pleasing, fully modern home, meeting all the current code standards, and the aesthetic improvement to the neighborhood, I think, will be significant, and I think that's one of the benefits. And frankly, I don't see any particular detriments. Looking from the outside of the house, you wouldn't be able to see that there's a violation. It's just when we do the math and compare it to the allowable standards. So, for those reasons, I believe the board has the ability to grant the variances requested.
Mr. Fletcher, I have, I have two questions. Number one, is it consistent with the surrounding neighborhood?
All right.
Mr. Fletcher, did you hear me?
Yes, I heard you. I was just asking.
Yeah.
Yes, there are other homes of similar size.
Okay, I do have one question. I was out to look at the property. It would have been helpful. The first floor of the existing home, do you know how many, what the square footage is? Right now, the new one is going to be 2133. Do you know what the one that is there now is?
Including the shed, it's 1,961.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Mr. Ayat?
In the applicant's defense, in running my numbers on the FAR, correct me if I'm wrong, Paul, but I came up with 42, so I came up with 1 point less than 43. If I took the square area of the, of all the floors and divided it by the lot size, 11,076, I came up with 42.55. So, I, we're only five over. And this is to answer Mr. Vice Chair Ski Bar's point concerning the FAR. If anyone came up with any different numbers, please let me know, but I came up with 42.55. So, it's not, it's not as drastic as it, as it appears to me as a zoning officer.
And I will add to that, the reason why I asked, how much is there now, is the fact that there's 19 there now, and you're going for 21, so in effect, it's almost the same footprint, except for 200 feet, and you're getting the FAR because you're doing almost an entire full second floor. Correct, Mr. Fletcher?
That is correct.
Fine. Does anyone else on the board have any questions for Mr. Fletcher or the applicant? None? Okay, okay. There being none, I'll go out to the public. Anyone within 200 feet of the property wanting to be heard?
Nobody from the public.
There's no one from the public. Anyone outside of 200 feet of the property wanting to be heard? And there are none.
No one to be heard.
So, I will close the case, and I will go to the board, please.
Mr. Kamba?
Oh, wait a minute. I got to make a motion.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. I need a motion, please. Board members, I need a motion, please. Someone, speak up. You're not on mute.
All right, Madam Chair, it's Mr. Ski Bar. I guess, in light of, I guess, the comments from Mr. Ayat, even though, like I said, this is considerably, you know, viewed as being over the FAR, I will make a motion to approve, it will be an enhancement and an improvement to the neighborhood and to the homeowner.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a second? Second, someone?
Taglianetti, second.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Taglianetti. Roll call, please, Jim.
Mr. Kamba?
Yes, on the motion.
Mr. Taglianetti?
Yes, on the motion.
Mr. Schmuel?
Yes, on the motion.
Mr. Mansouri?
Yes, on the motion.
Mr. Sedada?
Yes, on the motion.
Vice Chair Ski Bar?
Yes, on the motion.
Chairwoman Federick?
Yes, on the motion.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Fletcher, and thank you, Mr. Patel. You're approved.
Thank you very much. Good evening.
You're welcome. Stay safe and stay healthy.
Thanks, you too.
Thank you.
Mr. Ayat, next case, please.
Case number 3, Z46 2019, Main Street LLC, 2077 Oak Tree Road, Edison, 08820. Section 37-30.2 and 37.63-1, number 4. Use and bulk variances sought to demolish existing building on this lot and construct a single-story building with two individual units. Unit A to be quick-service restaurant use with a drive-through window. Unit B to be a general retail commercial use. Food services and a drive-through are not, are not a permitted use in this zone. Required front yard setback is 35 feet. Proposed on Oak Tree Road frontage is 27.49 feet, and proposed on Plainfield Road frontage is 27.74 feet. Effective properties located in the OS zone designated as block 545Z, lot 18, on the Edison Township tax map, all paperwork is in order.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Good evening, Ms. John Batista.
Good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you fine.
Okay, great. Good evening, Lisa John-Basta, on behalf of the applicant. I'm with the law firm Keys, Ashenian, and Janzmasi. I state, we're here seeking site plan approval, as well as use variance approvals, in order to demo the existing structures located on the property at 2077 Oak Tree Road, and to construct a single-story building that will have two tenants, one for a coffee doughnut shop/restaurant with drive-through, and the other is general retail commercial. Tonight, to discuss the application in detail, we intend to call four witnesses. We have our civil engineer, our traffic engineer, architect, and professional planner. If it's okay with the board, I'd like to call our first witness.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay. Angelo?
Present.
Okay.
Raise your right hand. You solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, to help you God?
Yes, I do.
Please state your full name for the record.
Sure. Angelo J. Valletudo, registered professional engineer, registered professional planner in the state of New Jersey.
And Angelo, tonight, you're testifying as an expert in civil engineering. Is that correct?
That is correct. We have the honor and pleasure to have both a professional planner and a professional traffic engineer to assist.
And have you previously testified before the zoning board in Edison?
I have for probably close to 30 years.
I ask that he be accepted as an expert in civil engineering?
Yes, we'll accept his qualification.
And Angelo, you were the preparer of the site plans that were submitted to the board in advance of tonight's hearing. Is that correct?
That is correct, but as in most site plans, I had the benefit of the surveyor and the architect, as well as technical review committee, and both Mr. Bignell and Mr. Carley. That is what we have before us tonight, which is, we believe, something that'll be, something that everyone will be happy and proud of.
Okay, great. If we could start by discussing the existing conditions and surrounding area to familiarize the board and the public with the location of the property?
Certainly. The property is just under, it's 0.63 acres, 27,436.65 square feet. It is currently developed with a one-and-a-half story, approximately 1,640 square foot footprint, which is utilized and has been utilized for a while as a real estate office, and it also has a one-story detached garage of slightly over 500 feet. I'm going to use a word that unfortunately we as engineers and planners use all too often, although it's certainly apropos in this case. The property is unique in that it has three frontages and is shaped as a, as a triangle. Frontage on Oak Tree Road, which is also a county road, number 661, on Marion Street, which is a one-way street that goes in a west-to-east direction towards Woodbridge, which comes off of-
The property is just under, it's 0.63 acres, 27,436.65 square feet. It is currently developed with a one-and-a-half-story, approximately 1,640-square-foot footprint, which is utilized and has been utilized for a while as a real estate office, and it also has a one-story detached garage of slightly over 500 feet. I'm going to use a word that unfortunately we as engineers and planners use all too often, although it's certainly apropos in this case. The property is unique in that it has three frontages and is shaped as a triangle. Frontage on Oak Tree Road, which is also a county road, number 661, on Marion Street, which is a one-way street that goes in a west-east direction towards Woodbridge, which comes off of Plainfield, and the third frontage is Plainfield Road, and again, creating pretty much an island unto itself. In terms of the zoning, and I believe, if I may continue, Lisa, in terms of the zoning, it is as Mr. Ayat, I believe, indicated in the OS office.
Uh-oh. We lost...
He's frozen.
Frozen for a minute.
Restaurant with a drive-through, and it's likely...
Angelo, you were frozen for a minute. Can you start by going back to the proposed uses in the zoning district?
Sure. Maybe I'm talking too fast. We do talk a little fast at times. The proposed use is a one-story building split into two units. Unit A being 2,020 square feet, that will be proposed for a doughnut/coffee shop/restaurant with a drive-through, and the likelihood is that it would be a Dunkin' Donuts use. The second unit is Unit B, which is 1,460 square feet, and that's proposed for a general retail/commercial use. These uses, proposed uses are not used or permitted within the subject zone, as you heard, Mr. Ayat, with regard to the drive-through, and they will be described later with our professional planner. As far as the site plan, the proposed building, the footprint is a combination of Unit A and Unit B, 3,480 square feet, and the building orientation will, it's going to be hard not to be oriented towards the roadways because we're on all three sides. The entrances to the two tenant spaces will be oriented towards the on-street parking, which is on the easterly side of the property. Unit A, the Marion Street/Plainfield Road portion of the building, will occupy the southern tent.
Angelo, if you could just pause for a moment. Angelo, if you could just pause for one moment. Would it be helpful if I shared my screen to put up the site plan for the board, or do you all have it in front of you?
Well, you know, we have it in front of us, but this might be a good chance to see how that works, because this is the first time we're having that. So if you don't mind, it might be a good idea, if you can, so we can see how much of it that we can really see. And if someone is pointing to it, it might be helpful to the board.
Is somebody controlling the meeting? Because they would have to enable me to share my screen.
Yes.
Should we be okay now?
He said you should be okay.
Okay. There you go. Good?
Oh, look at that.
Very good.
I'm impressed.
Been having a lot of Zoom meetings lately, okay.
Hi.
All right, Angelo, orientation of the building.
Yes, the orientation of the building, as you now can see, is on the far westerly side, which is the widest portion of the property. We have Unit A, which is the 2,020-square-foot building, and that is on the upper portion, excuse me, the lower portion on the Marion Street frontage, and Unit B, the smaller portion, which would be for retail/commercial use, which is up towards the Oak Tree Road frontage, or the northern tenant space. The parking for the site will be a shared parking lot, as you can see, which is to the east of the building, and that there will be a total of 18 parking spaces that include two ADA van-accessible spaces, which are the closest to the entrance to the building in accordance to the barrier-free requirements. And we've also added, at the request of Mr. Bignell, a crosswalk from the area of the two ADA parking spaces towards the entrance of the building. Now, based on the parking ratio for retail/commercial and the restaurant use, we calculate there would be a requirement of 34 off-street parking spaces, and as been identified and as shown on the site plan, and as I just indicated, we only have 18. We do have both a traffic engineer, professional traffic engineer, and a professional planner who will address how we believe that what we're showing is sufficient for the proposed use. Breaking it down a little further, Restaurant A, or Unit A, 2,020 square feet, requires one space for every three seats provided for a patron use, or one space for each 50 square feet of retail space, which excludes the kitchen and utility rooms, whichever is greater. And with that, we calculate approximately 27 spaces. We were conservative on the calculation since the end user has not been secured yet, and we do not have a final interior, but we are comfortable with the area that we provided for the number of spaces, that that would fit what the proposed tenant would be. We base it on the anticipation of approximately five tables within the proposed restaurant, and assuming that the five tables have four seats for each table, which is conservative, would result in the 20 seats, and then would be about the seven spaces. As far as the calculation based on retail square footage, the estimated square footage, again, conservatively estimated at approximately 1/3 of the space within Unit A, which will be used for kitchen/utility area, leaving approximately 1,347 square feet of retail area, which result in the approximate 27 spaces being required. Thus being the total, approximately 34 spaces. And again, we're seeking a variance to provide 18, and expert testimony will be provided later in our presentation.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, I interrupted right there. This is Hank. Yeah, our review points out that the parking was calculated just on retail space, but since the applicant is now going to do the restaurant, the parking calculation is different, so it doesn't reflect that in our report. But since there is a variance, they're going to have to pay into the parking variance, parking fund, the township's parking fund, parking space fund. So that's going to be calculated at some point.
But the calculation, I'm assuming that Mr. Valletudo just gave, I assume, of 34 is correct, so we're talking about a difference of 16?
Yeah, so they're going to have to pay into the fund for the 16 spaces that are short, if you grant an approval with the variance. Okay?
Okay, it's fine with me if it's fine with the applicant.
It is.
Okay. All of a sudden, you got very low, Ms. John-Basta.
Okay, am I okay now?
You're still kind of a little low, all of a sudden, but go ahead, I can hear you. If the board can hear you, they'll let us know.
Can't hear you.
Can't hear you.
Can't hear me at all.
Can hear you, but you're, it's like, yeah. We know you're far away, but you sound...
I can hear you, just get a little louder, that's all.
I usually don't have that problem. My husband usually comes upstairs and yells at me for talking too loud, but...
Yeah, that's better.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, great. Okay, so we agree to the payment for the parking fund. We understand that.
Okay.
Now, the next section is with regard to the proposed loading area. As Mr. Bignell indicates, one space is required for operations of more than 3,000 square feet, less than 20,000 square feet, and we are not providing any. And it will be testified to later, but at this point, we just want to put on the record that each unit is separate and distinct from each other, and are individually less than the 3,000 square feet. Just being presented, but the actual testimony will be presented later in our planner's testimony. In most likelihood, the loading and unloading will be worked at the site with small, straight-body trucks that will be able to fit within the parking space, and would be deliveries made during off-hours so as to not interfere with the ability for either tenant to be able to operate. And with regard to the number of deliveries per week and how often again, would be based on the actual tenant, and would be addressed later in the testimony by our planner. With regard to the refuse area, we do show the refuse area on the far easterly side of our parking lot. It's 15 feet by 12-foot concrete dumpster pad, 6-foot-high block wall, double swing gates, and we do have, and they're going to be chain-linked with slats, since that's to be the most durable for gates. And we do provide, I know Mr. Bignell had requested self-locking gates on it, so that that is something that we did show on the plan, but will obviously comply with, and it would also be landscaped to shield the view, and we would do so to the satisfaction of Mr. Bignell. Again, it will be picked up by a private hauler. We approximate one to possibly twice a week, and that it would be done, again, during times when the operation is not in use, so as to not affect the individuals getting into and out of the parking lot. As far as pedestrian access, we already spoke with regard to the entrance and exits for both uses being on the easterly side of the building towards the parking lot. We have the crosswalk for the two handicap parking spaces. And then, in response to the comments of both Mr. Bignell and Mr. Carley, we have sidewalk around 3/4 of the building, and then also around the entire perimeter of our frontage. Site circulation, again, there is a separate driveway dedicated just for the drive-through, and again, there will be signage that there is not a bypass lane for it. And then, there's a second entrance coming in off Marion Street, and a third entrance on Oak Tree Road, a right-in, and the exit will be a right-out on Oak Tree Road. And again, we have a traffic engineer to be able to discuss more about the ability of our site circulation to handle the proposed use, as well as the trash and any emergency Drive-through lane, again, I won't steal the thunder of our traffic expert, but we believe it's somewhere in a neighborhood of 12, and I know Mr. Bignell had thought that it's possibly approximately 10, so that would be addressed later. As far as signage, we will comply with Mr. Bignell and Mr. Carley. We believe we have, in terms of signage, that there are no bypass for the drive-through, and that the entrance off of Marion Street to the west is for only the bypass only. In sort of lighting, we do have the lighting and landscaping plan that we believe in Mr. Bignell's report of August 24, that we have satisfied, that we do meet the terms of the municipality. One of the benefits by being, as we have all the frontages, is we enjoy a lot of the ambient lighting coming in from the three streets, especially from Plainfield and Oak Tree Road. We are, in Mr. Bignell's report, supplying sufficient amount of number of trees, although in my discussions with Mr. Bignell, I think there was a number that was off, but we will agree to meeting the proper number. However, the number that we have in terms of trees, as shown on the plan, do meet the municipality standards. Again, and one of the items that Mr. Bignell wanted to address, and we believe we have with the landscaping, is we have it along the outside perimeter of our drive-through, so as to not have our vehicles going through the drive-through as headlights to adversely affect either the traveling public on Oak Tree Road and Plainfield Road, or any of your residents on either Plainfield or Marion Street. With regard to stormwater, we are utilizing both sheet flow towards Oak Tree Road, as well as creating our own inlets on our drive-through, and I believe with Mr. Carley's report, that we have satisfied him, but will put on the record that anything that Mr. Carley is looking for us to do, we would agree to satisfy him. And my director just showed a close-up of the two storm drain inlets. Thank you for making me look good.
And also, the landscape plan just showed that there is extensive landscaping around the perimeter of the site.
That's perfect. Again, with regard to the bulk variances, again, will be handled by our planner, but a majority of them are based on the fact that we are with three front yards in a highly irregularly shaped lot. We did eliminate, not surprisingly, one of the setbacks, and we believe it was the most critical of the three, that being off of Marion Street, Marion Street being a residential road, whereas both Plainfield Road and Oak Tree Road are pretty much commercial. Stormwater, we talked about. With regard to the report, and I don't know if it was, I didn't hear it entered into record, we acknowledge as part of the record, the August 25, 2020, report from Mr. Carley, in which he, it's his second review, and you'll see that he highlighted the comments from his earlier, and we were fortunate that he, or pleased and fortunate, that he has indicated that he's satisfied with everything. He is under miscellaneous, looking for some items in terms of a construction logistics plan, and also an update by our traffic expert with regard to the impact study, with regard to the current proposal, both of which we can comply with. With Mr. Bignell's report, and again, I believe there may be just one or two things from an engineering standpoint. Under item 10A, certainly the outside agencies, the county and free old soil, would be a condition of any board approval. We will provide through the assistance of our traffic engineer to show that the ability of an SU47 emergency vehicle, the Edison standard, can be graphically shown and be included. Letter C, as we talked, we showed the crosswalk from the handicap spaces to the entrance. With regard to the tree replacement calculations, as I said, we'll correct the number, but the number of trees, and I think Mr. Bignell agrees, are sufficient. Under H, we will agree, and we'll add a note, that the landscaping will have an irrigation system so that they can be properly maintained. Residential appearance is more for our architect. Freestanding signs, I don't believe we're proposing any, only facade signage, which we indicated is pretty much shown on the architect's plan, and Mr. Winkle will be able to testify as to them.
Angelo, just to number, to item D, a realistic loading space should be provided for the food service. Was it your testimony that the, any deliveries would park in a...
We believe that they...
Parking stall, and that would be sufficient for the proposed uses?
Right. It would be typically the straight body, and usually what they would probably do is park in the space closest, which would be the first space next to the two handicap, and it wouldn't be done prior to the opening of either of our tenants.
Thank you.
With regard to the pipeline, that is something that, if we receive the benefit of your approval, I'll proceed to get those letters from Mr. Bignell, and certainly, note number 12 indicates, as he's requested, that should we receive the benefit of your approval. All prior approvals, and there was an earlier approval that Mr. Bignell testified to back in December of 2007, for a three-story office building with ground-floor parking, that would be completely vacated based on approval of this particular application. And letter M is a great ordinance, being the professor as I am also, that all fees should be paid as part of the application.
Great.
Any questions, Lisa? I'll stand down and get a drink of water.
I have no further questions.
Does the board have any questions, Mr. Valletudo?
Is it, Madam Chair, this is Sergio speaking.
Go ahead.
So, because the property is so close to a residential home, when we talk about loading and unloading, you know, items and supplies to the restaurants and removing trash, I understand that it has to be done on, not in operational hours, but are we talking about early morning, like, you know, 5:00 AM? Or are we talking... So because the property is so close to a residential home, when we talk about loading and unloading, you know, items and supplies to the restaurants and removing trash, I understand that it has to be done on, not in operational hours, but are we talking about early morning, like, you know, 5:00 AM? Or are we talking about late at night, past like 11:00 PM with, you know, the residents maybe sleeping? Do we have a timeframe in mind?
Well, again, with the anticipation that Dunkin' Donuts would be our tenant, Dunkin' Donuts between 6:00 and 9:00 does like 80% of its business. So I would suspect that the trash would be removed somewhere in the neighborhood of 9:00. We're obviously not going to come before you and say we're going to come in early in the morning before 6:00 and disrupt the neighbors. And we're not going to come in during the peak time of our, our largest tenant. But certainly it won't be late at night.
Mr. Valletudo, I do have a question. I don't know if you're the one to answer it. You talk about deliveries off hours. Do you have any hours if, quote, it is Dunkin' Donuts?
I really can't speak to that. I suspect our traffic engineer has experience with Dunkin' and can speak more to it and be a little bit more specific than I really can.
I do have one other question as to the drive-up. Would that be you or someone else down the line?
Well, why don't you answer your questions, and we'll see if I can answer it.
I noticed that you have the pickup and it's on Marion Street. Where, where is the ordering done?
The ordering will be done back approximately, and I'm not sure what the exact sign is, but further back along the Plainfield Road sign. So that we can balance, and I guess a lot depends on the tenant, because each one has different requirements in terms of queuing and time and all. And in the case of Dunkin', I know, based on a couple that I've been involved in, they pride themselves on doing it within a matter of just a few minutes. So that being the case, more than likely, the menu board would be a little closer to the drive-up window to allow more for stacking. But as far as the exact location, that's as far as I can give you. And perhaps our traffic engineer would be able to pick up from there.
Okay, so I will throw out my concerns, so maybe down the line someone can answer it. I'm just concerned that the, the voice from someone ordering into the ordering, the part of it, will carry into the residential area. There are some homes on Plainfield Road, aren't there?
I'm sorry?
Aren't there homes that are also on Plainfield Road as well as Marion? And I'm just concerned that there's going to be some spillover vocal noise from ordering.
Because drive-through Dunkin', they're scared that, you know, the voice, the order, the worker calling, going through the speaker?
Craig, we can hear you.
Yeah, I'm not sure who's talking, but if someone can answer that down the road, that's fine, when that person comes up. But I'm just putting that out there because that is a concern.
There's also mechanisms having dealt with Dunkins before. There's also mechanisms to lower the voice control in the event that a residential person, you know, complains with respect to, you know, the noise levels that are out there. And this also is not a 24-hour operation either, if that, if that helps. But hopefully we can have somebody else testify in greater detail as to the speakers.
Okay, does any of the board members have any other questions with Mr. Valletudo?
Madam Chair?
Yes, I hear the voices, but I'm not sure who it is, and I don't-
It's all right. It's okay. It's Mr. Kumba. One question that just came up, and I don't know who, if it's Mr. Valletudo or one of the other professionals to ask us. But one thing that I would like to know is what are the proposed hours of operation? It's, you know, it may be a Dunkin', it may not be a Dunkin', but, you know, we need some, we need some hard and fast answers as to what we're looking here in terms of timing.
Hours of operation, yes. So hours of operation was proposed 5:00 AM until 10:30 or 11:00 PM.
Okay, Mr. Kumba?
Yes, thanks, Madam Chair.
Was there someone else besides Mr. Kumba that had a question?
Madam Chair, Tagley and Eddie here.
Yes, sir.
Will we have someone to speak to the traffic?
Yes, that's our next witness.
Do we have a traffic expert?
Okay, and anyone else? Mr. Betty, were you, did you have a question?
I did not, Madam Chair.
Okay, anyone else have a question? Peter?
Yes. How many deliveries per week do we anticipate?
Again, that would probably be better served by our traffic engineer, who probably has a little more experience with Dunkin' since that's pretty much what we've been putting forth in our testimony for the board to consider.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions of the board from Mr. Valletudo? Okay, I assume he is finished and you can go on to your next-
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, this is Mr. again.
Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Valletudo, how far is, and I know obviously this isn't going to change, but how far is the, the, this building from the closest residential area? So like, if I'm looking down south towards Marion Street, or not south, but towards Marion Street, you know, do you happen to know how, how far that, that home is?
Well, our setback is 35 feet from the property line. Marion Street is another 50 feet, so that's 85. And you have about another 20, so about 110, 115 feet. And it's probably, if I'm not mistaken, the side of the house, because I believe it fronts on Plainfield. That's my recollection.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, Madam Chair. Sacha Muwale.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Muwale.
Mr. Valletudo, what is a backup plan if Dunkin' doesn't come into this property? Is, is there an alternative?
We have our operator here. If you need to speak with him, we can call him about some of these questions. But as, my understanding is there is an LOI that is signed with the Dunkin'. So it's pretty close to being finalized.
Thank you.
Any other questions? And would anyone like to speak to the person that Ms. John Bastard just mentioned? Okay, then I guess we're moving on.
Okay, then next I will call our traffic expert.
I'm here.
Wait, excuse me. Okay, is it easy to take the site plan off so I can get everybody back on screen?
Sure, no problem. There you go.
Great, oh, that was great. I'm coming into the 21st century with all this technology. Okay, who's next up?
Right here.
Craig?
Yep, I'm here.
Okay, can we have him sworn in, please?
Yeah.
Craig Perigoy.
Okay, do you sell Miss Fair or firm to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth to help you guys?
Yes, I do.
Get your full name for the record.
Sure, my name is Craig Perigoy, P-E-R-E-G-O-Y.
Thank you, Craig. And have you previously testified before the Edison zoning board in capacity as a civil engineer or traffic expert?
I have. It's been, it's been a little while. I can go through everything if you'd like.
Do you want to briefly go through your qualifications?
Sure. I have a bachelor's degree in civil engineering from Virginia Tech. I'm a licensed professional engineer in New Jersey. Have been working as a traffic engineer for 20 years now. And I testified pretty much on a nightly basis before planning and zoning boards, including in Edison, both, both boards in the past.
Okay, well, we'll accept your qualifications.
Great. And Craig, you were the preparer of the traffic impact analysis that was originally dated February 11th, 2020, and then revised August 12th, 2020. If you could discuss for the board what you did to prepare your report and your conclusions?
Sure. As you heard from the prior testimony, we're in sort of a triangular location. We have intersections at all three corners. So what we did to take a look at the traffic volumes there is take traffic counts at those three corners. So we looked at the Oak Tree-Plainfield intersection, the Oak Tree-Marion intersection, and the Plainfield-Marion intersection. And we took those counts during a weekday morning, 7:00 to 9:00 in the morning. Weekday evening, 4:30 to 6:30 in the evening. And then a Saturday between 11:00 and 2:00. Those are the busiest times that you'd see the roadway at its busiest. And you'd see retail, and obviously in the morning, you'd see the Dunkin' Donuts at its busiest. We did our counts in January and February of this year, so we did have good data. It was before the, the emergency hit, so obviously traffic volumes are a lot lower now. But we have pre-pandemic data, so the, the data is good. What we do with that data is, is isolate within each of those time periods the single busiest hour or the peak hour. So we're boiling this report down to the weekday morning peak hour, weekday evening peak hour, and Saturday midday peak hour time periods. And what we're going to do is assume that our proposed use generates its peak traffic during that exact same hour. So we're looking at a worst-case scenario. So in any other time of the day, the traffic would be improved from what we're taking a look at. Now, with those counts, we need to take a look into the future a little bit. Because obviously it's going to take some time to construct the site. So New Jersey DOT publishes a growth rate for this area, for these roadways. And they give a 1% growth rate per year. So we took those existing peak hour traffic volumes, grew them by 1% per year for two years to get the future traffic volumes without the proposed project. Now, in terms of how much the site itself is going to generate, we use the Institute of Transportation Engineers, and I'm sure you've heard that from other traffic engineers. It's essentially a compilation of research traffic counts that were taken at other land uses throughout the country. And in this case, we looked at the retail space, the 1,460 square foot of retail space. And the land use for the Dunkin' Donuts is a coffee/donut shop with drive-through. And I'm able to use the ITE data to project the amount of traffic that this site is going to generate based on the sizes of those uses. Now, something that's important to consider, especially when you're talking about a Dunkin' Donuts, a lot of the traffic generated by it is going to be what's known as pass-by traffic. In other words, people who are already traveling primarily on Oak Tree Road or Plainfield Road, who now are going to detour into this Dunkin' Donuts, pick up their coffee, pick up their breakfast sandwich, pick up their, their donuts, and then continue on their way. So that traffic's already out there on the road today. It's not going to be introduced to the area. It's not new traffic to this area. It simply detours into the Dunkin' Donuts. And the ITE tells me that during the weekday peak hours, about two-thirds of the traffic that enters the site is that pass-by traffic. So it wouldn't impact any of the other intersections beyond these three. It's already traffic that's there on, on the roads. And on the Saturday, the weekends, it's about half of the traffic, 50% of the traffic. Now, I think, especially during the weekdays at this location, these are busy, heavily traveled commuter roads. I think nearly all of that traffic is going to be pass-by traffic. I don't see anybody going out of their way, especially when traffic volumes get back to the way they were to go get a, a coffee at this location. These, these sites are, these users look for sites where there's heavy traffic volumes because that's the type of traffic they want. They want to pull in that traffic off the road. So that's particularly what makes this location attractive to Dunkin' Donuts. So what I do is add that, I'm sorry?
Okay, go on, thank you.
So what I, what I do next is add that traffic that the ITE projected onto those grown traffic volumes, the future traffic volumes that were grown by that 1% per year. And I'm able to then make a comparison of what, what the intersections around the site and the driveway will operate without this project or with this project. Now, I didn't take any credit for the fact that there is a development on the site today. So there is a small amount of traffic being generated by the site today. I didn't remove that from this roadway network. I simply just added all of the ITE data onto what we counted. And remember, I'm assuming that the, the peak time period of these uses are the exact same time as the roadway peaks. Realistically, they'd probably be offset somewhat, but I'm looking at a worst-case scenario. And then what I do is prepare what's called a capacity analysis. It's, it's based on, it's a computer software. It's based on traffic signal timing, the traffic volumes, who turns where, stop signs, things of that nature. And what it does is create, generate for me a delay per vehicle, which is then related to a level of service, which is sort of how we grade the intersections, A through F, A being the least amount of delay, F being the most amount of delay. And the intersections surrounding the site are generally at a level of service D in the future with or without this project. So none of those levels of service changed with the introduction of the site traffic. You change some of the turning movements. You have a little bit of change in delay in some locations, but none of those levels of service changed. So what that tells me is essentially that you're not going to have a significant impact. And again, a big part of the reasoning behind that is the amount of pass-by traffic that I think we've underestimated in, in reality, what we're going to see. But even with that worst-case scenario, looking at the busiest time periods, the, the pass-by traffic that the ITE tells me that you see in the rest of the country, not at a location like this, that level of service does not change in the future with or without this, the traffic from the proposed Dunkin' Donuts and the retail use.
Thank you. Are there any benefits related to a, a drive-through facility from a traffic standpoint or parking standpoint?
Yes, absolutely. I mean, obviously the drive-through facility expedites the service. You can get your food, get your coffee much quicker, and you're in and out of the property much quicker. It's certainly beneficial for, for the elderly, for people with kids. You don't have to get out of your car. It definitely reduces the need for onsite parking and drive aisles, so much less pavement with that drive-through lane rather than having more parking spaces. And we've certainly seen that in the Dunkin' Donuts that we've done. Our office has done research at existing Dunkin' Donuts, many in Middlesex County. Actually, we've looked, the drive-through queuing and the parking. We find that the parking demand is almost double when you don't have the drive-through. So it's certainly beneficial to that.
No, and, and speaking of parking, do you have an opinion related to the onsite number of parking spaces that are proposed and whether it be sufficient to meet the parking demands for the proposed uses?
Yes, and as I mentioned before, we, we've done quite a number of Dunkin' Donuts, and we've done some research parking counts at Dunkin' Donuts. We actually have three in Middlesex County, Monroe, Old Bridge, and North Brunswick that we've done parking counts at, at their busiest times. And the peak parking rate that we see at those similar locations right in Middlesex County is 6.32 vehicles per thousand square feet. And if you do the math at this location, that relates to 13. So a peak parking demand, which would likely be in the morning, of 13 vehicles. As far as the commercial space, I know your ordinance requires one per 200, which is essentially five spaces per thousand square feet. Realistically, that, that's a higher standard, an older standard for retail. The ITE publishes parking data similar to the trip data. And what they find is the peak demand to be 2.91 spaces per thousand square feet. So if you do the math for this small retail that we have, that's four spaces. 13 and four is 17. We provide 18 spaces. Now, keep in mind that the Dunkin's peak demand is going to be obviously in the morning, whereas the retail would be more later in the day. So they don't peak at the same time. But even if you just do the math and add them up, we still have enough parking spaces with 18, based on local research and, and national research.
Thank you. There were some questions that came up from the board members related to the, the speaker and the location thereof. Do you have any information on that, or should I ask our architect or our operator?
Well, I think, you know, assuming that Dunkin' is the operator, where that speaker would most likely be would be on the Plainfield Road side, so the west side of the building. It's certainly, they're certainly not loud. They're digital now. It's not like the old squawk boxes that it used to be. It's more of a conversational tone. And it's certainly going to be much quieter than the traffic that's humming along Plainfield Avenue every day. So I, I don't think that would have any impact on the residents nearby.
And do you have any knowledge on anticipated deliveries for the site?
Yeah, my experience with Dunkin' is they typically have a, it's, it's a van or a box truck that would deliver in the morning daily, donuts and coffee and things like that. Then maybe one or two times a week they'd have supplies delivered. It, it's not like a, there's no beeping or tractor-trailers or anything like that. It's a pretty quiet operation. It's just, it's pulled out of the back of a van or the side of a van and hand-trucked into the store. It's not something that's very disruptive. And obviously during the peak times.
Thank you. And in your experience related to the small retail that we have, it's, you know, less than 1,500 square feet. Would you anticipate any large or numerous deliveries for a retailer of that size?
No, certainly not. That, that's not going to be, I mean, a tractor-trailer has more storage in it than the size of the entire store. So that would certainly be a smaller type of truck as well, most likely.
Thank you. I have no further questions.
I do have a question.
Who's that? Mr. Tagliano, Matty?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
I have two, I have two concerns regarding traffic. And the first one is, from the parking lot, there is an exit onto Oak Tree Road. That exit is- That exit is east of Plainfield and just west of the Marion Street intersection there. That seems pretty dangerous with the traffic, particularly driving 40 miles an hour on Oak Tree Road.
That driveway is a right turn in and a right turn out only. So there's no left turns at that location. And we've...
I understand that. My concern is traffic coming right out onto Oak Tree Road, with traffic coming from the west, heading east on Oak Tree Road at somewhat of 40 miles an hour.
Yeah, and that right turnout, there's adequate visibility. So that's certainly... Safety is not a concern there. You have adequate sight distance. And you will get gaps in that traffic from the traffic signal. So that movement will be able to be processed, that right turn out, fairly easily. And keep in mind, the majority of the traffic generated at this site is going to be that drive-through traffic. And that traffic does not access the Oak Tree Road driveway. They're strictly onto Marion Street. Your professionals asked us to segregate that drive-through traffic, and we've done that. So that's going to limit the volume at that Oak Tree Road driveway.
And Oak Tree Road is a county roadway, is that correct?
It is.
And so we would need to obtain county site plan approval in order to have the access drives where it's proposed?
Yes, correct.
Additionally, you really have to, when you exit this site, other than the Oak Tree Road, you're exiting onto Marion, which is on the south side of that street residential. I think there's two or three homes there, okay? You're forcing all the traffic onto Oak Tree Road, heading east. So if I came from the south or the west, wanted to get a cup of coffee, I have to exit onto Oak Tree Road. Where do I turn back to go west or south?
I mean, you'd have to take a look at the roadway network and figure that out. The idea that...
I know the roadway network there, and you're going to force people onto Whitehall and Peru or Waller. And it's crazy.
Unfortunately, Marion Street is a one-way, so all that traffic has to go to the east. And again, that's why I mentioned this being such a heavily pass-by use. It's primarily people wanting to make the right turn into and out of and move out of convenience, not necessarily go out of their way. You're going to find another place to get coffee or a donut, you know, if it's inconvenient for you. We're trying to get that traffic going north on Plainfield and east on Oak Tree primarily. But I agree, there's no opportunity to get back to the west just based on the site location. Marion Street is a one-way, and we're certainly not going to try to make a left out onto Oak Tree. It's far too busy.
Okay. Any other... Any other questions from the board?
I got one question. When it comes down to...
Please say... Wait, please say your name first. Wait, hold. Wait. One minute, please. Down to speak, please say who you are first, so this way, when it's recording, we know who you are. I mean, I can see you, but for the recording purposes, just please say who you are. So now, who are you?
Mansouri.
Huh? Are you there? You said it softly. Say it again one more time loudly.
Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, I think you froze a little bit for a while there. So start again, please.
Can you guys hear me? Sorry. Yeah. Sorry, I believe it's my internet.
Okay.
The question I have... Oh, God. Oh, no.
Yeah, I know. Jeff, why do I have the three red things there? Does that mean that there's a problem?
That's right.
Oh, okay. Got it.
Better now.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Mansouri.
Okay, cool. So one question I have is, when it comes to the driveway, drive-through traffic, would you be able to pull up that... You're screaming, I miss. I very much apologize.
Sure, no problem. None?
So one concern I have right now is, when I look at the drive-through mapway, I understand that Oak Tree Road has the entrance that allows for the 18 parking spots. However, Plainfield Road into Marion Street allows a, almost a direct or access into the drive-through itself. What happens because Marion Lane, Marion Street is a one-way road? What happens when the traffic, the pass-by traffic? Right, because I absolutely agree with you that no one's going to go out of their way for a Dunkin' Donuts. I believe you're completely correct on that, that every, all the business generated will be pass-by. But what happens when the Plainfield Road traffic, especially from people, you know, coming back in the afternoon? What happens when that traffic, it overflows the drive-through? So where does... How many cars can fit in between Marion Street and Plainfield before it overfills into Plainfield?
Between Marion Street and the driveway?
Yes, sir.
At least five cars can fit there. But I... The drive-through queue itself that we have, it's 12 vehicles before that crosswalk. Again, I mentioned that we've done that research at other Dunkin' Donuts. We've also looked at the drive-through queue, and we see a maximum of nine. It would go between seven and nine at maximum. So we think there's certainly more than enough stacking in the site. You can also fit, if it went past that crosswalk before you're out on the Marion Street, another three cars. So you could really have 15 vehicles in that queue. And I don't know about you, but if I'm going to pull into a Dunkin' drive-through and there's 15 cars in front of me, I'm skipping it and moving on.
No, I just wanted... I just wanted to make sure I clarified.
Yes. Good question.
Anyone else have any other questions?
Madam Chair, Mr. Stebar.
Yes, go ahead.
Now, you mentioned something, I guess, about each of the intersections having a rating? Is that like an A through D or A through E?
It's A through F.
A through F? And currently, all three of those intersections have a D rating currently?
Yes, the Oak Tree-Plainfield signal is at a D, overall at a D. And then the Plainfield Road-Marion Street intersection in the morning is a B, the evening is a D, and the Saturday is a D. So in general, you're in the D range. We look at each individual movement, which I could go through if you wanted to, but it's just a little more simplistic to kind of give you the overall picture. But those levels of service are generally in the C to D range and don't change, which is what I think the more important takeaway is. They don't change with the introduction of this development.
So from a user, from a driver experience, what does a D rating kind of constitute?
It's related to the number of seconds that you wait. Now, typically, the great... People try to compare it to a grades in school, but that's not necessarily the case. If I was designing a new intersection, I'd want it at the peak hours to work at a D. That certainly wouldn't be an acceptable grade in school, at least for me. But what it relates to, I'd say, a signalized intersection is 35 to 55 seconds of delay. That doesn't mean a whole lot to most people. That's why the level of service grade is given to it. And when you get beyond 80 seconds of delay, that's when it's an F or a failing level of service. And the only reason that is is because that's when people tend to get frustrated. After 80 seconds of delay, then you begin to get more frustrated. It's essentially a range of delay that creates that grade.
Okay, then thank you.
Mr. A, you had a question?
Yes, if I can expand on Mr. Tagliano-Maddie's comment. If I'm a homeowner and I live on Peru Street and I come out of Peru, I can make a left there on Oak Tree Road. So I would have to come basically all the way up and around and come down Plainfield Road to make that left onto Marion, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then, so I pull into Dunkin' Donuts, I get my coffee, and I exit on Marion. And I... To get back onto Oak Tree Road, going the same direction I was going originally, I would have to go all the way down and make a turn in one of the parking lots there or down one of those streets or down Peru again? Is that correct?
Yeah, you'd have to...
Turn around. There is no legal turnaround there.
No, there's no U-turn. Anywhere along there, so you'd have to use the roadway network to get back, unfortunately.
And that's for any street over there on that area, going up to Sunnyside Deli. Well, not to Sunnyside anymore. Automatt.
Well, if you live in Peru, you can go turn around in your driveway and go back out.
Yeah, okay. I got you. All right, I just wanted to make that clarification. I appreciate it.
Any other questions?
Madam Chair.
I thought I heard two. I don't know who.
I think it might be me echoing. It's Charlie.
Oh, Charlie. Okay, I didn't know you were here because I don't see you. Hi, Charlie. Good evening.
I can put my video on. I'm not a good-looking guy, though. There I am.
Oh, there you are.
Oh, hiding.
A couple of questions for Mr. Paraguay. You know, I'd agree with you that the proposed use relies heavily on pass-by traffic. But it appears that the driveways are all-oriented, such that all the traffic leaving the site would go onto Oak Tree Road eastbound. Is that a fair observation?
Yeah, and it's because Marion's a one-way. It's really our only option for this.
Yeah, so the... And that being the case, you can anticipate left turns off of Plainfield on...
Yeah, you could... You certainly have left turns from Plainfield into Marion.
Yeah, do you think...
Wait, Charlie, we lost you, so you're going to have to back up a little, please?
Okay, I'm... I'm sorry, I always mumble.
No, mumbling, you just froze a little bit.
I froze. I apologize. I'm speaking toward the intersection of Plainfield and Marion. Because most of the pass-by traffic will be coming from eastbound Oak Tree Road, it's... One can guess that a significant part of that will take a right turn off of Oak Tree onto Plainfield and then take the left turn from Plainfield to Marion. And that intersection is already marked by a "do not block the box" pavement marking. So that intersection probably has a significant...
Charlie, you're breaking up again. And it's not you, it's just the system. So you're going to have to back up a little bit. Jeff, is there anything you need to do?
Here, I want to stop the video and give you more bandwidth. And that's actually something that, if you're not talking, to give additional bandwidth. Mute and stop your videos. But the question of Mr. Paraguay is, does he think there's a significant chance of the left turn motion from Plainfield Avenue onto Marion having detrimental impact on southbound Plainfield Avenue traffic?
Well, I'm glad there's a "do not block the box" painting there, because that should keep that from happening, from that being blocked. But I do note that typically that queue is extended, and I think the reason that's there was the evening peak hour, where you're going to have a lot less traffic than in the morning. So the morning, when we're seeing that peak generation, it is not as bad from Plainfield Avenue. But yeah, that "do not block the box" is certainly going to be helpful as that left turn becomes more active. And southbound Plainfield is two lanes, so if somebody does get stuck waiting to make that left, they're not backing traffic back on an Oak Tree, there is another lane to bypass.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. I'm sorry, is Plainfield Road also a county roadway?
It is.
So we obviously would need county approval for the entire site and the circulation to ensure that it doesn't have any detriment to the surrounding area, is that correct?
Correct.
Is there anyone else on the board that has any questions?
Madam Chair, Mr. Kamba.
Who is that? Yes, Mr. Kamba.
As it relates to Marion Street, the two entrance ways, I noticed that there is one driveway that is only through the drive-through, and the other driveway is only for the parking lot. If I look at the top key, it says that there is a two-faced curb between parking area driveway only. In your experience, have you ever worked on a similar site? Because I've never seen anything like that. And it's just, I don't exactly get how it's going to work, how often people are going to want to go into the site, either to go to the other retail use or go into the walk-in park and wind up in a drive-through. And then, you know, if it's not a sufficient curb, you're going to have people driving over the curb.
Yeah, and I think that curb came out of, you know, original discussions with your professionals, trying to limit us, particularly for the pedestrian access from the parking lot into the buildings. We didn't want to make that a big four-legged intersection and just add to that. So it's really a pedestrian safety measure was what it originally started as. But I have seen Dunkins where the drive-through is separated. There's one, I don't know if you're familiar with it, in Piscataway on... It's either Washington or Stelton. I'm not sure what it is there, and West 7th, where the drive-through is a separate access point from the parking area. And people learn it pretty quickly and figure out how to navigate it. I mean, it's... The Dunkins are repeat customers for the most part, so you figure it out pretty quickly. And I have seen it work in a much tighter site than this and work well.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, I guess we're moving on, Mr. John Besta.
Thank you. Our next witness is our... Yes, thank you. Our next witness is our architect. Roger?
Where is he?
I'm trying to find him myself. Roger, are you on?
I think I saw him in the attendees, not in the panelists. So I didn't know you were brought over. I do see him.
What's his last name? Winkle, you're looking for...
Can we make Roger...
Give me a second.
Winkle, yes, a participant. Thank you.
We come over.
There he is.
I am here and...
Hello, Mr. Winkle. Did you raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, to help you, God?
I do.
Please just state your full name for the record.
Roger Charles Winkle, address 947 Park Avenue, Plainfield.
Roger, have you previously testified as an architect before the Edison Zoning Board?
I have. It's been a year or so, but I have testified before.
Do you have a license in architecture? And can you just briefly go through your professional and educational background?
I am architect, graduated from Rensselaer Polytechnic Institute. I became a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey in 1981. And I've been in business for myself in the Park Avenue location for, since 1984. 35 years. I've testified before many boards.
Thank you. We'll accept his qualifications.
Thank you. Roger, if you could, I'll pull up a plan. Do you want... Which plan would you like me to start with?
Well, we could start with the floor plan. That'll only take a couple of seconds to explain.
I pulled it up on my first try, although... I got it. Hold on. Yeah, okay.
Okay. Well, the building is very simple. It's almost a square box, but it is a box. And it's 60 feet wide and 57 feet deep. Total square footage of the building is 3,480 square feet, which would be broken into two tenants. Tenant space A is the tenant... Tenant space A is the tenant that possibly would be the Dunkin' Donuts, um, and that is 2,020 square feet. Uh, that is on the south side of the, the property. And tenant space B is 1,460 square feet. The, um, the bottom of the sheet is the, um, the front, uh, doors which face the parking lot. The, uh, left side of the sheet is, um, the Marion side of the floor plan. Uh, this, um, this, that's the drive-through window location. And the rear of the building is the Plainfield Road side. And the right side or the north side of the building is the Oak Tree Road side.
Yeah.
We could go to, uh, drawing, uh, drawing two.
Drawing two? Okay, hold on. Flip this around.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Drawing two, uh, the elevations from the, um, the front elevation, the parking lot elevation, and the, um, the Plainfield Road elevation, which is the, um, the westerly side elevation. Uh, the, um, the, the materials to be used throughout the, the space is going to be, um, cultured stone along the bottom of all elevations, uh, hardy plank siding. And our upper areas where the signs are is a combination of stone and stucco. The, uh, the roof material that you see is standard shingle roofing. Uh, one of the comments was to try and, uh, make the building look as residential as possible. And that's why we've got, um, the sloped shingle roof on all four sides, uh, hardy plank, which is typically a residential, uh, type of, uh, material, and, uh, the stone, which is very common now in residential areas. Um, the, 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 um, the main glass area faces the parking lot. Um, so those are standard commercial glass units. But around the, around the Plainfield Road side and when we turn the sheet around the Marion Street side, there is, um, there, it really isn't any commercial glass. These, these, um, circular, uh, panels are opaque panels. They're not, they're not glass. On, um, we go back to... We're showing the floor plan.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm trying to find the other sheet.
Okay. There we go. Gotta flip it over again. Okay, very good. Um, as I was saying, um, the big, the large glass area and the entry area is really the elevation from the parking lot. Uh, on the Plainfield Road side and on the Marion Street side, um, there really isn't any, any glass. This is all, um, opaque panels, um, standard, standard, um, raised panel doors, um, to look like residential area. Um, you'll also see on the sheet that, um, we have a, the list of the signs that would be on the building. Uh, both on the parking lot side and the Plainfield Road side, we are proposing two signs. Uh, they would, they're basically, the, 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 the three signs, the two on the, on the parking lot side and the, and the one to the right side on the Plainfield Road side are seven-four by one-nine, so they're 12.83 square feet. The sign that's on our, our little tower, which is on the corner of the northwest corner of Oak Tree and Plainfield Road, uh, that was, that sign is 9.3 square feet. And that sign, uh, would have the, um, the building number or it could have a small tenant sign. The, um, the height of the structure to the top of the sloping roof is 20 feet. And to the top... Excuse me, let me go back, uh, to the, to the top of the... I can't read that. It's, it's 20 feet to the top of the signboard. It's 18 feet, I believe. Yes, 18 feet to the top of the mansard roof. And to the top of the tower is 25 feet four inches. Um, if we go to the third sheet.
Um, that one I might not have, but I'll try to find it. Yeah, Roger, I don't have that one saved on my desktop.
Oh, yeah, that's the third sheet. Well, I, I asked the board to look at the third sheet, A3. Um, we don't have an example for the screen, but, um, that is the Oak Tree Road elevation at the top of the sheet and the Marion Street elevation at the bottom of the sheet. Um, the Oak Tree Road corner has some commercial glass. Uh, but the Marion Street side, uh, the only opening is for the drive-up window. Those other, the other, uh, circular decorative pieces are opaque panels. So from Marion Street, uh, you'll, you'll see the stone at the bottom. The stone surround the gable of the, uh, of the drive-through window and the hardy plank with the opaque panels from that, uh, from the view on Marion Street. I would say that's, um, my presentation.
Great, thank you. Does the board have any questions for Mr. Winkle?
I did find A3. I'll just put it up just to show it, in case there's any members of the public viewing.
Yeah, that's sheet three. Okay.
Thank you.
Does the board have any questions for Mr. Winkle? Okay, I guess there's no questions. We're moving along.
Great. Our last witness is our professional planner. Great, and there he is, Ed Collin.
Good evening.
Hello. Would you please raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, to help, to help you God?
Yes, I do.
And just state your full name for the record.
My full name is Edward Colling, K-O-L-L-I-N-G.
Ed, if you could, very briefly, give your educational and professional background for the board?
Certainly. Um, I'm a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey, also a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners. I graduated Rutgers in 1974, which was just more than a few years ago. In fact, when I graduated from Rutgers, there were only men in Rutgers, or when I started at Rutgers, I should say. Women were in Rutgers College by the time I graduated. Um, I've been licensed since 1984. Uh, formerly, I was director of planning in the city of Jersey City, I was director of economic development in the city of Elizabeth. I've testified at the planning boards and zoning boards throughout the state of New Jersey. Uh, my license is still in good standing and paid and up-to-date as of today.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll accept his qualification.
Ed, if you could, uh, start by telling the board what you did in preparation of your testimony this evening?
Well, I did, I reviewed the plans. I had discussions with, uh, the other professionals, um, including our civil engineer, traffic engineer, architect. Uh, I visited the site and drove around the area. Um, I reviewed zoning and master plan and, uh, then prepared my, my testimony for tonight.
Thank you. If you could get into that testimony and discuss the variances that we're seeking this evening?
Certainly. What I'll just, I'll do is I'll just gonna jump, jump right to it because I think you've heard enough presentation on what the site looks like and what, what the plan, uh, envisions. Um, we're primarily here because there is a use variance involved and it has to do with the restaurant as well as the drive-through that's associated with it. And the first thing we should discuss is what is the particular suitability of the site. I think you've heard that this is a very, very unique site. Um, it's a little bit larger than what is required. It's over 27,000 square feet. So I think that's, that's something that goes to its particular suitability. It's isolated from other, other land uses. It's isolated from the residential that's across Marion and the, the two or so residential that are across, uh, Plainfield. Um, so it's, it's, it's kind of a site unto itself. And I think that also goes to its suitability for the, uh, the drive-through. Um, the uses aren't, the use is not inconsistent with other uses in this OS zone. Diagonally across Plainfield and Oak Hill, I mean, Oak Tree, there are, um, other food service types of uses, such as Chinese restaurant, pizzeria, those sort of things. So it's not out of character with what you might expect to find in this area in terms of the, the food service. Um, the bank across the street, the TD Bank, does have a drive-through, although that's a bank. This is a restaurant, obviously. They're not identical. But it's, it's not completely out of character with what you might expect here. Um, and, uh, I think that, um, the, the, the quick, the quick-service food use will, will serve the passing traffic. You've heard discussions about Plainfield being rather busy and, as well as, as Oak Tree, and that this use is intended to serve passing traffic. So this, this property being a sort of island and being serviced by three different, uh, streets kind of uniquely makes it suitable to service that segment of the motoring public, who might, who might pass by and then stop for their cup of coffee, not intended to generate a whole bunch of additional traffic. And I think that also goes to the suitability of this site to serve that portion of the, of the public. It will provide that particular kind of service to that part, portion of the, of the public. So I think that, um, the approval of this, uh, this use, this application at this location would be a municipal action, um, that would, uh, guide the appropriate use and development of the site. And that, that's consistent with, uh, subparagraf 2A of the Municipal Land Use, uh, Municipal Land Use Law. Obviously, I think the project provides adequate air and light, um, surrounded by roadways. Uh, it's not overdeveloped. Uh, you heard the engineer mention that it's only about 12 and a half percent lot coverage, building coverage versus 25% that's permitted. There's a significant amount of landscaping surrounding the parking. So I think that we also meet the, uh, the intent of subparagraf 2C of the Municipal Land Use Law. Um, the site provides sufficient space in an appropriate location for this kind of use. As I was just mentioning, it's, it has three, three frontages. It has good access from adjoining streets. There's a lot of passing traffic. The site's a little bit oversized compared to what the requirement is. So I think that, that again goes to the, um, sufficient space in an appropriate location, which is subparagraf 2G. And I think it also, uh, does provide an aesthetic improvement, which is, uh, which is paragraph 2I. You'll pass the site today. Um, the building's a little old, it's a little tired, the site is a bit worn. And what will happen with this, you'll have a new, modern commercial building in a commercial zone. And you'll have new landscaping, new curbing sidewalks, et cetera. So I think we also meet the intent of, uh, paragraph 2I. Uh, in terms of negative criteria, I don't see any substantial detriment to the public good and general welfare. This is a commercial zone. This is a commercial use, albeit not expressly permitted by the, uh, by the zoning ordinance. And it's not inconsistent with other uses in the area. Um, and because of it being isolated from other properties, I don't see a significant impact on the other, other properties, uh, in, in the area. Uh, I don't see a substantial detriment to the intent and purpose of the zone plan. Again, it is a commercial use and it is in a commercial zone, uh, that, that will permit certain limited types of retail and other, other uses. So although it's not permitted, I don't think it rises to the level of being a substantial detriment to the intent of the, uh, zone plan. And that's in part due to the unique aspects of this piece of property and its, and its location being isolated from, uh, other, other properties in the area. We are also looking for, uh, some C variances, one of them being front setback. And I think you can see that this property is irregularly shaped. It's, it's a triangle. It's also impacted by the fact that it has three fronts, so we have to meet that, set that criteria on all sides. Um, I think that, uh, that, that creates a hardship situation. I think the site, the site planning and the architects have, have worked, the civil engineer and the architect have worked well, well to position this building so that there, there are only two locations and they're sort of the corners of the property where it does go into the, uh, setback area, but not by a significant amount. I don't think that granting that variance creates a overdevelopment of the site. I think that's evidenced by the fact that, again, we're about 12 and a half percent coverage, where 25% would be permitted. So that's not gonna result in, in a, uh, overdevelopment. And I don't think that would, that would really be noticeable to the, uh, to the public. And on the side of the building that most closely, uh, adjoins the residential properties across the street, it doesn't indeed comply with a setback. So I don't see a substantial detriment to the public good because of the property's isolation and that the setbacks, variances are really facing the more major roadways. Uh, I don't see a substantial detriment to the intent of the zone plan. We're not exceeding building coverage. We're not creating an overdevelopment. So I think we've made the positive and negative criteria for that variance as well. We have an existing non-conformity, which is the lot width. And it's impossible to meet that in this particular case because we're surrounded on three sides of roadway. So that hardship, again, creates a situation where the, the, uh, the criteria cannot be met because we're restricted by public rights of way. Um, the other variance that we come down to as well is now parking. Um, and that also look, you have to look at that from the hardship perspective. The fact that it's a, a narrow lot at the eastern end, the triangular shape, makes it difficult to configure parking in a way that's, that's very efficient. Um, we think the site, site planning has been done in such a way that the parking has been maximized. So we can't do any, any more than we've already done, so to speak. Um, and the variance for the drive-through actually works to mitigate the impact of the, of the, of the parking variance. As you've heard testimony from the traffic engineer, that, uh, a, a large percentage of people who would otherwise have parked will now go through the drive-through. There's much lesser demand, um, on the off, off, off-street parking or on-site parking, if you will. Um, so I think that there's no significant detriment by granting this variance. Uh, the traffic engineer has also testified that the expected parking demand is within the 18 spaces that we provided and that the peak demand of the individual uses should not overlap. So that, uh, even at the worst-case scenario, we should have an extra space. And in a better-case scenario, where you look at the different timeframes when the, uh, peak demand for parking is, we should have more than adequate parking to serve the, the two uses that'll be on, on the site. Um, again, it's primarily looking at bypass traffic and so that people going out of their way to come here... to come here to use the parking facility, go into Dunkin' Donuts, is probably going to be very limited. The other issue I think we have to address is the loading. Once you're over 3,000 square feet, you do need a loading space. We're not that much over the 3,000 square feet. It's 400 and something square feet over. If you heard the testimony that the Dunkin' Donuts itself would have a use area, which would be, I think it's 1,300 and something square feet. So if you looked at it from a net basis, we're probably under the 3,000. We are under the 3,000 square feet. You look at the spaces individually, each individual space is under 3,000 square feet. So I think there's mitigating factors here for, for requiring the loading. And I also think that, as you've heard from the testimony, that the, that the loading can, or the deliveries can be scheduled where they can use the, the parking spaces. It's from a van. It's from a straight truck that can go into those parking spaces when there, there are spaces available and be able to load from that area to the extent that it's, that it's needed. So I think that due to the, again, the configuration of lot, its shape, the difficulty in trying to, to fit into this oddly-shaped lot, the hardship that that creates, you can grant this variance under the hardship criteria as well. And based on the previous testimony as to how the loading can be handled, I think we would end up also meeting the negative criteria. And that's a testimony.
Thank you. Terrific. I have no further questions.
Does the board have any questions of Mr. Colling?
Madam Chair, Phil Taglinetti, just a comment. Mr. Colling mentioned or compared this to the TD Bank on Oak Tree Road just west of this site. That TD Bank, as well as the other commercial and retail properties on that road, allowed you to make a left out of their property and head east or head west onto Oak Tree Road, whereas this property, we know, we're limited to just going east on Oak Tree Road.
Mr. Colling? Can you answer his question?
I didn't understand that as a question. I thought it was a comment concerning my testimony that I, in this case, we are limited to going one direction. I think Mr. Taglinetti was pointing out that unlike our site, those properties across the street can make lefts. Is that correct, Mr. Taglinetti?
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else on the board have a question for Mr. Colling? Okay. Ms. John Basta, anything else this evening?
No, we've completed our affirmative presentation. Thank you.
Okay. You're just there with me? Yeah, I'm going to put you, everyone on mute. Just give me a minute, please.
Okay, I'm back. I'm sorry. I just wanted to double-check on something. Ms. John, this is Basta. As you know, we had said that we would hear the public on a different evening. I know there is some public out there listening to us, but there has public calling the office, and I know they've been told specifically that the public would be heard on a different meeting night. So at this point, even though we could probably get to the people that are there, I will not do that because there may be people who may be away and didn't worry about listening, or they may decide that they would watch this and then be on when we are having it on again. And right now, that date is for the public on September 29th. So the public will be heard on September 29th. There'll be no notice, any additional notices will not be required, and the public will be heard, and then the matter will be concluded. Okay?
Thank you.
Okay. You were sort of frozen there for a minute, so I didn't know if you heard me. Okay, so having said that, I, we will see you on the 29th. And now, one last call for my board. Any questions? Oh, I probably should go to this. Mr. Bignell, I'm assuming you're okay with everything since you've been kind of quiet this evening?
Yes, Madam Chair. I just want to make sure that the board knows about the variance, and that's a good thing that we can carry it and figure out how much money so we can put the exact amount of resolution if you grant this approval.
Okay, for the parking, you mean?
Okay. Excuse me?
I didn't hear. The parking, we're talking about the parking, right?
Yeah, we need to calculate what parking fee into the parking ordinance is going to be.
Got the same thing, and you sort of froze there for a minute, that's all. So then you're okay with everything, correct?
Well, it's up to the board. I mean, I, they've answered my questions in my review. The board has to be satisfied, though, with, with their testimony.
Right. I just want to make sure that you're okay with your letter. Mr. Carley, are you still there?
Yes, I am.
Okay, I'm assuming you're satisfied with everything so far with your letter. Do you have anything else that would you would like to add?
No, just for the board's edification, the process with this application started in 2019. Mr. Carr had done some, some review reports I picked up from there, and the current iteration of our report is our second review. So it's had a little bit of chew-and-over by the engineers.
Okay, fine.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, okay. With that, I would say to Ms. John Basta and to her professionals, and I will say, say, stay safe and healthy. See you on the 29th. And I will ask my board to please stay on. And I guess that's it. We have no resolutions this evening, so I need a motion to adjourn.
Let's go adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good night.
Good night. Thank you.
Delays and everything. Thank you. Good night.